Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start the meeting with a COVID update. Amber and Jim.
Yep, Jim's not on, so, but I've got the numbers. Our positives officially are ninety-six this week. Last week, we didn't have a work session, but the the number was ninety-three. So it's up three. It was up four the prior week, so. We're having having more cases on the island and the Suffolk County seven-day positivity rate is five point three percent. Last week it was four point five percent. The week before it was three point seven percent. So we are seeing increases all around as we are across the country.
Okay. Hey, we're still doing our bit. We checking people as they come into town hall. Checking for vaccinations and if you're not vaccinated, you can't attend public meetings. Continue to.
So this school like canceled the the shots for younger kids, right? Because there wasn't enough.
It wasn't a big enough turnout. Initially, they had thirty to forty kids, parents felt there would be that many kids, but then when it came down to it, they only had like five or six kids, actually.
Okay.
So the hospital felt that we couldn't do it for that number. Okay, next on the agenda is Article sixteen, Bob. We're gonna we have this hearing set set for Friday.
And that's what we have to decide today, really, is whether I don't know if everybody's had time to kind of go through this all yet, or.
Well, we're gonna set it. It's not. Is it said or we're gonna send?
Needs to be said.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna set it for Friday, but we can we can run run through it.
Most of what we're dealing with on this is just setting forth in writing, you know, how the government is constructed. There's really nothing new here. It's really mostly for continuity, so that as things go forward, nowhere they are, and so that people in the that want to understand it can look it up and find out. A lot of people do that we've just done. So this just puts those into code.
Again, this goes.
No, go ahead.
I'm sure this this the whole this whole premise goes back to, and I reference it often. You know, Al Kill will always say that, you know, you know, the town works. It knows how to get by, but lately, in the last couple of years, we've been questioned on a lot of things that, well, you know, you do this, but that's not what it says in the code, or that's not what the definition is. So we're trying to make everything that we do do it by the book. So we're going over our Article sixteen's administration, our elected officials, all the different departments and make sure everything's up to code. Likewise, we'll be going over the definitions of all definitions in our local laws and everything else, just to make sure we're doing everything the way it's supposed to be done. Or the way we do it is the way it's supposed to be done. So when we get challenged, we're on firm ground.
Um, no, I just I I guess maybe I didn't give you my knits and my knaps. So I'm gonna just give this to you now.
Oh, okay.
Because there's there's some typos and things like that that should be cleaned up before we set the public hearing.
Then we'll have in-depth 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 discussion after we set the public hearing. Okay, next on the agenda is the Myers wetland application. This we set. We had the public hearing and we were gonna meet. We canceled the last work session, so we're gonna have it today. We have people here to discuss it with us. How do we want to start?
Bring them up. I'd like to just get an overview.
Okay.
Larkin with Bennett Reed, officers of two twelve, New Orleans, South Canton. I apologize for the late submission, but I do have a written submission in response to all the comments that we received from the CAC and the planning board.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'll give the.
So I kind of just tried to go point by point, but through each of the items that were raised by the planning board and then also by the CAC to address any comments that they have raised. I did want to point out on response to item two, where they were talking about a reduction to less than one hundred square feet of coverage within the seventy-five-foot vegetative buffer. There were comments raised about what was existing on the site. So we did confirm there's about a hundred and forty square feet of concrete patio and concrete pathways that are being removed. So I'd say it's offset significantly the hundred and seventy-six square feet that's proposed by that one hundred and forty square feet of concrete that is being. We also tried to give you a list of all the mitigation that is going to be involved in this application. Significantly, the abandonment of the wastewater system that's currently located approximately seventy feet, seventy-five feet from the bulkhead, which is going to be located as far as possible on the property, all the way on the corner of Simpson and Bay Avenue. It's going to be an IA system. We've already got our health department approval and actually had to go to the board review for review for that as well. The well is actually going to be located significantly further from the water. We are installing appropriate dry wells. And that I think it was mentioned that there was supposed to be a drywall associated with the pool. There is a drywall in the driveway area that'll capture backlash for the pool as well. Again, we had one hundred and forty square feet of concrete paths and paddies that are to be removed. I did want to point out also that around the pool area, which is all located more than seventy-five feet from the bulkhead, they're not proposing any sort of decking or concrete patio. It's going to be paper set and grass. So it's going to have more inferior, less inferior surfaces in that area as well. And everything that is proposed is going to be proposed within areas that are currently lawn. So it's not like we're removing native vegetation to install any proposed improvements. Oh, and also, we we were able to confirm for you, it's a twenty-five-foot wetlands buffer that is proposed along the entire length of the bulkhead, which is about over four thousand square feet of native vegetation, and our clients would obviously agree that that native vegetation is likely fertilized. Right now, there is lawn that extends essentially up to the bulkhead area. So if there's any questions, I know it's kind of a lengthy submission, but I did want to try and address each point, point by point for you that had been raised at the prior public hearing. Attached to what I had submitted are two exhibits. The first is just a confirmation of the length of the boat that's going to be housed in the boat shed. The boat shed was designed specifically to house this, so it's not out in the yard. It's twenty-nine point six feet in length, so the boat shed is thirty-two feet. They tried to keep this small as possible, because I think there was a question about whether or not the boat shed could be reduced in size. But the boat itself is twenty-nine and a half feet long. We also had tried to push the boat closer to Bay Avenue rather than closer to the bulkhead, but the zoning board of appeals asked that the boat shed be shifted so that the front of the shed itself would be in line with the garage structure, which is why it kind of sticks out a little bit into the seventy-five-foot setback. The second attachment that I did include is from the set of architectural plans. There was a question about the basement underneath the house. So this is the demolition plan for the basement showing what's existing. And the proposed finished basement area was included in the package that was previously filed. Just to see that we are going to be putting a basement that stays within the footprint of the proposed home. But the areas that had been, I guess, crawl space are going to be dug out to be basement areas. Mike Shiano from Interscience came in person today to.
Sure.
Any questions?
Yeah, I realize the pool, I guess the request was divert to go down to a maximum depth of four feet, and the applicant did not agree to that. The pool itself is only twelve feet by nineteen feet.
Correct.
Twelve feet wide, nineteen feet long. Not a very big pool. And it said that the ground depth there is eight feet, five inches, you know, of eight and a half feet, I guess. And that the pool will be less than eight and a half feet. Do we know what the pool depth will actually be? Is it a six-foot pool?
I actually was trying to get in touch with our clients to confirm, but they actually so I could not get that answer for you.
We would, we would encourage, rather than hinting with an eight-foot pool to go down there. I mean, it's it is a small pool, but most of the pools that are being put in now, we're getting away from the eight, nine-foot depth, and we're pushing for the six and four-foot depth whenever possible. Nope, none of the pools that we have going in have a diving boards and things like that. So you know, it doesn't necessitate that that eight or nine-foot depth. So we would like to see it a maximum of six feet, and that would be two and a half feet above. So there is absolutely no de-watering of any type, you know, for the pool or any construction, which I see you have down here in item nine. Says no de-watering will be required in the proposed renovation or in the additions.
Right, and I believe it's actually in your your town code as well, when you sort of call it no de-watering is required, allowed. So it's obviously.
And you do have the automatic pool cover that you're going to use there, which is, which is a good thing as well. So the basement, the the basement, actually the crawl space area, that's just gonna be enlarged, go deeper, and it's gonna be more of a full basement. But stay within the confines of the of the frame of the house.
Correct.
Okay.
They're trying to get additional square footage without expanding their footprint. So we are going down in the basement. To get that square footage within the house.
Okay, so will that basement, I'm not looking at the diagram right in front of me. Will that basement be even with the exterior porch portions of the house, like a regular basement would be? Okay.
What is the the depth of the height of that basement?
I know that we are not getting any deeper. We are lifting the house up so that we didn't have to dig any deeper into the the ground. I believe that the depth was want to say eight and a half feet, but.
But you're not going deeper.
We are not going deeper.
The first, the first floor is gonna be raised accordingly.
Correct, yeah, the the entire house is being lifted up, and that's one of the reasons why we actually had to go to the board review was because, as a result of lifting it up, the porch actually the front porch came out a little bit further so that we added more steps.
Right.
To get down, so.
The there was a crawl space. There is a crawl space, or it's on a there's no foundation, no basement structure under the sunroom now.
There is a foundation wall on the water side. But there's and there's a crawl space that goes out to to it right now.
All right. Did you put that calculation, the actual creating living space down there in your square footage within the seventy-five foot?
Not creating living space, no.
That is space down there, right? That will be used as living space?
It will be used as living space. I think the the application itself talks about the increase in coverage within the seventy-five foot setback. So the basement area won't increase coverage, but it will be additional habitable space.
But it's livable space, yeah. I mean, I.
Yeah.
It's a fine line this year.
Yeah, we we are not, the setbacks of the existing house, we're maintaining the existing setbacks. So while there is increase in living area of the house that is being in the additions that we're less than seventy-five feet away, the setback has been maintained.
Okay, because I know the the front two corners of that west side wall is what sixty-seven, sixty-eight feet?
Sixty-six point nine feet, I think. Yeah, yeah. So and and so the new corner.
Within what you're excavating is well within the seventy-five-foot vegetative buffer.
Right. But we are not getting any closer. I just wanted to highlight that. So we 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 attempted to maintain, even though that we are squaring off the those two corners of of the house, neither side of it is getting any closer to what.
So you're not going across the entire west side of the house with the basement? Or you are?
No, I think they are.
I don't. It's not on this drawing in the exhibit. I know, I think you had it put as a mechanical room underneath the northwest.
Yeah, so this this drawing is just the existing, just so that you
The existing house.
See this and then compare it with what was previously assumited.
So it says full basement.
That's substantially more ex- living space that you're creating or usable space in the basement by excavating across the whole west side of the house.
It is more living space, but again, we were trying to allow our client to get some living space without increasing their footprint and, you know, covering more of the property. So they are creating that additional living space, yes, within the seventy-five foot. Completely within an area that was previously crawl space. So it's not going to increase your footprint.
Well, that completely within the crawl space. I mean, there was a basement stairs there, then there was area. There was a garden area in front of it. What was that? I presume the kitchen area that you're excavating.
Right. And although there is an increase in living area, I believe that the fact that we are also proposing of over four thousand square feet of native buffer that doesn't exist right now. It's it's well more than, it's many times more than what the the benefit that we receive from the increase in living area.
Did you put that in your calculation, the amount of living area then extended on the west side in your amount of intrusion into the seventy-five-foot buffer?
I believe the survey indicates the amount of area of the house that it's the the footprint area that extends into the less than seventy-five feet away. It doesn't specifically state the the living area that extends into that that is new. But we can provide that if if that's the number that you are asking for.
I just want to make point out that you are increasing into the seventy-five-foot vegetative buffer zone with new construction.
Correct.
Do you have one of the co-chairmen of the CAC that's here, Howard? Based on some of the comments that you've just heard, do you do you have any concerns since they are here that you might want to address? I think Albert's point is fairly well taken. Just identify who you are.
Howard Johansson. I'm a conservation committee. I made several of these comments. I agreed that you should not have any intrusion into the seventy-five foot. And that's that's basically stated by the BEC. And town code, we say in two locations, say that, Donny Coop is near shore over the peninsula, we say minimum of seven, should be back a minimum of seventy-five. Now here, what we're doing, we're excavating more area in seventy-five and including the area under this forty-two channels footprint. I don't need to count that as a footprint, it's like a deck over this area. I don't think we should be excavating in a seventy-five foot at all. I think we're just opening problems there. And also, we have to subtract the existing sixty-four square feet. Those are two major items. And then we had also considered that in the hundred, I know it's a very difficult property to maintain, but it was always there when the house was purchased. The code was in place. It's not an existing owner doing something which then would take into consideration, but this is a new owner. The code has been in place for fifteen, twenty years about the wetlands. And a hundred-foot buffer adjacent, so twenty-five-foot adjacent buffer to seventy-five foot. So we have decided that in order to apply a little bit, we let you put the pool over, but no other bases, nothing under the garage. Not excavating at all within the seventy-five. The larger beyond there, so we still have all that soil underneath to filter any impurities that we pick up across the street, which, or any place, you know, run up on the road. Especially from across the street, I've read the improvements from the health department. They were bent on the baggage to get well in order to work. And the neighbor doesn't upgrade it, it's not required. Then I think you're well entitled to ensure. What is the software that rises, the insurance is coming. And if you have a storm in the west, which so far we've been lucky to have a back that would overflow into it, and the walls that we created, we pull us on the second bolt wash back into the bed. That's why we from CAC were against any excavations, basically, in ninety, seventy-five foot. That was one of our major objections to this. So that would mean that we wouldn't have a base under. I didn't read. But that's basically what we're trying to do. Code set, there's adjacent from seventy-five foot line to construction.
Just to clarify with regard to, sorry, you could sit down. I just want to clarify with some, because there seems to be some confusion regarding to that, the hundred-square-foot exemption. Hundred-square-foot exemption is a one-time exemption, can only be used once. However, can only be used once, so we're using this project, it can't be used in the next one. So if the gazebo was built after the hundred-foot exemption was instituted, then that would have used up whatever square footage is. If the gazebo was built before the hundred-square-foot exemption was instituted, it'd be pre-existing and would not have used here one time hundred foot. That's how that hundred-foot exemption works.
Yeah, looking at the planning board report from October the eleventh, and item number two on page two, it talks about, number two, there will be new construction encroaching into the seventy-five-foot vegetative buffer. Per calculation scheduled on the survey prepared by Michael Hemmer, last dated twenty-eight July twenty twenty-one, the two additions, which are namely are the shed and the steps, extend one hundred and seventy-six square feet into the buffer. New construction of less than a hundred square feet is permitted. It may be possible to reduce the shed's size to bring the total intrusion increase into conformance with the with one twenty-nine dash two exemption. Did you guys look at that at all?
You have any questions?
We had, and that's why I submitted with you today a copy of the specifications for that boat. Again, we tried to reduce the size of the shuttles to the minimum size necessary to house the boat that our clients have. So it's thirty-two feet in length, and the boat is twenty-nine points five feet in length. So really did try and reduce the size. We also had tried to push it closer to the road. And when we went to the zoning board of appeals to ask for a variance for front yard setback to allow the shed to be closer, the zoning board of appeals asked that the shed be located so that the front face of it be in line with the garage. And so that pushed back the shed a little bit closer to the wetlands.
Okay.
So we did try to make it as small as possible, and we also did seek a variance for it. But also, I just about the basement underneath the garage area for the pool equipment, and it was done so that there's less ground space that's disturbed for the pool equipment itself. So it's basically just housing mechanicals for the pool itself. So there's less ground disturbance for area wise.
That's within the garage?
Correct.
The height, is this the raising of the building so that you can accommodate the basement? Is that a new new change in height from the original elevations that we received?
I know, that's been part of the project from the beginning.
The depth of the shed, or not the shed, the whatever the pool cabana, the garage, what's the depth of that basement?
It's gonna be the same as the house. And I can look at the plans and confirm that for you. But I I believe it's going to be the exact same height as the as the height for the house.
So just so I understand the structure, so the the cars aren't gonna drive right in on grade into the garage? They're gonna be going up, because the garage is gonna be elevated?
The garage is not going to be elevated.
It's gonna be on grade, a slab on grade, well, not a slab.
Oh, right. Yeah, I I I see where you're at. Yeah. So 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 the bait, I'm sorry, what I what I what I'm thinking about is the 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 floor of the basement in in the in the garage will be at the same level as the floor of the house. So the height of that will be shorter than the height of the house, because it's not going to be lifted up. So what what I was thinking when you asked the question was, are you gonna go any deeper than the existing basement? Because that was something that was very cognizant about when we were proposing this. And the answer to that is is no, we're not going any deeper than what the existing basement of the existing houses. So so it's not going to be at habitable height. I believe it's only going to be about maybe seven feet in in the basement of the of the.
Height, okay. I mean, your water is, your water level is very high. And that was done, what, four and a half years ago, the test well? Eighty-five inches, I mean, I you.
Yeah, the the test well was done then, and then we've done, and then we've done additional tests since then, and it's been fairly I think the last test that we did was two years ago, and the water level has not changed since then. At least in those two years, the water level had not changed between when we originally did the test hole and when we did the initial, the subsequent tests.
In the same location?
In the same location, yeah. So we actually, initially, we had to do, we had to test the water for the health department for where the well was going to be. And the process, that process took more than a year, so we had to test the water again from a standpoint of drinkable water quality. And at the same time, we also measured where the the level of water was, and it was basically the same.
The purpose of that basement under the garage, is that just for the pool equipment? Or is there other things that are happening below the garage?
It's a.
Other storage?
Mechanicals.
All mechanicals?
Yeah.
For the house and for the pool?
I think that we we're still trying to figure out where the best place for all the mechanicals for the house are. And that that's been part of, like, the discussion that I that I've been having with the owners. It is, it's it's basically for storage of mechanicals and other storage. So we, I guess, I guess, to to answer your question, we're not a hundred percent certain.
It seems like a, you know, a fairly large area, just to put the pool mechanicals down there. You know, where most people have the pool mechanicals above, you know, they just put bushes and or some type of stuff around it.
Right. I guess we started by just proposing the, because we had to put the the pool equipment in a location that wasn't too close to this the side.
Well, what I'm thinking is they're trying to maximize the basement, the living area. So to get all the mechanic, if you could get, ideally, if you could get all the mechanicals underneath the garage for both the pool and for the house, that would be ideal situation, because then you could maximize the number, the square footage of the basement for living area. I I'm sure that the owner has that in mind, though.
He probably has that in mind, but part of the limitation that we have is there's also a reality component that I've been trying to work with them on in terms of, we we've been speak, like, even as part of the design of this work, we have been discussing with an MEP engineer about how far some of these, the the these things can go between the two houses. So like, you can't put your AC condensers in in the basement of of the of the garage, which is why we had to want to putting them on the north. putting them on the north side of the house. So we're, we're trying to balance these two things. These things about what space is available for utilities and mechanicals and what space is open otherwise, but I, he is, he is very well aware that, that the, the, the amount of square foot living area is, that we are proposing as part of this application is what he's going to get. Number one, it was part of the ZBA conditions that we can't go over what is already proposed. And we're also keeping everything below the six thousand square feet, and we wanted to make sure that that was the case so that we didn't have to ask for a special permit from this board for that.
I, I was reading, I had my head down, that wasn't when you were speaking, what is the depth of the pool and what was the discussion on that?
The pool itself, I honestly was not able to confirm it with our client. He had said that he was, wanted a depth greater than four feet, which is what I believe was the recommendation. And we obviously will comply with town code requirement that does not allow for dewatering. So I do know that the depth of groundwater is eight and a half feet, so it would obviously be less than that eight and a half feet, but depth, but I will confirm with our client the depth of the proposed floor.
Is it a vinyl or gunna, what's proposed?
It's gunna.
All right, so it's going to have to be deeper to put in rebar.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm suggesting six feet.
Which is what we'll bring up with that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think even going to seven feet, you're going to have a problem, you know, it's going to be right there, you know, so I, I would suggest maximum six feet. Go to five feet and play volleyball, be around in that. Something I wish I would have done. Of the six bedrooms in the house, can you just describe for me, are there any bedrooms in the basement? I, again, I don't have the whole plan in front of me, where, where are those six bedrooms located?
The six bedrooms you're referring to, they're under the health department standards. So there are rooms in the basement that are considered under the health department's standards to be actual bedrooms.
Okay.
There are egress windows that are being provided in the basement area. I don't know if they intend to use those rooms as bedrooms, but they are, for health department purposes, they've been accommodated, we've accommodated them in the wastewater system. So the site has been designed for six bedroom system, and that's what was approved.
There was no increase in bedroom count from the existing, the house has been adjusted. And we, we, we knew that the order review was not going to allow us to increase that number, so we have held the number at the existing number of it.
Anybody else?
What's the size of the proposed water pump? It's kind of important.
Yeah, we've been requesting that on all.
About the size of the pumping capacity?
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah. Yeah, a lot of the bigger houses with, which approach six thousand square feet or more on bigger pieces of property. We, we do try to recommend numerous things to conserve water. And that rate of pump is important, fixtures, the fixtures that the house has, you know. Anything where we could conserve water, obviously is important with the house of this size.
We like to see usually a holding tank as well, maybe a three hundred gallon, at, at least.
Getting the lower the pump in the high, large capacity, the holding tank, the better.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there recommendations, could I say, the county engineer?
Sure, Joe Fenaro, old Joe. Howard, you had your hand up on a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment. We had looked at the plans and we noticed that the letter from the D E C was submitted in twenty seventeen. And it was by a previous owner and previous engineer and surveyor. And I think in order to keep the paperwork straight, should we buy this owner, this surveyor?
Um, the, the letter of nonjurisdiction that was submitted is a nonjurisdiction letter based on the fact that there's over hundreds of linear feet of bulkhead. Um, if you, we, it actually does not pertain to a specific site plan, it pertains to the fact that there is bulkhead on the property. And when there is a hundred linear feet of bulkhead, then you're beyond jurisdiction with D E C. They actually, we have had clients try and apply for updated letters of nonjurisdiction when it's a definitive line like a bulkhead. The D E C actually has been disinclined to even issue new letters of nonjurisdiction, they provide you with a copy of the old determination. So I would say that it's unnecessary to get an updated letter. Because it is based on the fact that there are a hundred linear feet of bulkhead on the property.
Would disturb them that much? I think it's a little disturbing, less to me anyways, being an engineer, that we have paperwork here that didn't refer to the actual owner now, or the engineer, or the surveyor. New surveyor, new owner. And I think just for the paperwork, I understand, but how upset about that nobody's really defaced this D E C letter recommendation of jurisdiction? If all the paperwork should be this.
What, what's your thoughts, Robert?
Generally, the D E C makes its determinations based upon property, not upon ownership. So as long as that it's, that's generally, I think Bailey said is correct, if they, if they submitted it, what they're likely to get is a copy of the same letter. I don't think they're, unless their conditions have changed, and the bulkhead has been changed or redone or, or something along those lines. There's not going to be any change to the D E C disposition.
I think bulkhead has been picked. For one thing. It's just a matter of going through the paperwork, you say, who is the owner? You know, the owner should be who the owner is, and engineer should be the engineer who's on the job, and the surveyor should be today's surveyor.
Not really, we've had the D E C nonjurisdictions letters that are fifteen years old, and three owners got passed.
Based on surveys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Howard.
Part of that is that the, 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 the regulation from the D E C is specific to the fact that the bulkhead has been in existence on the property since August of nineteen seventy seven, since the, the date that the, since the date that the D E C title regulations were in effect, so whether or not a D E C letter of nonjurisdiction was issued immediately after that or up till today, it's still the fact that that bulkhead.
Yeah, the, the thing with the D E C is they're not, they're not interested in this particular project or what's going on here. All they do is rule as to whether or not this property is, is or is not within their jurisdiction.
I think to Howard's case, I mean, yeah, I understand that with the D E C nonjurisdiction, with all the other paperwork, it, you know, surveys and everything else, the engineer should be in, going forward should be in the application.
Yeah, for anything that's with project specific.
Right, correct.
Meg, do you have anything, or BJ, do you have anything that you would like to comment on? Anybody from the board?
Okay, so, so go ahead.
I was just going to say, could we get the new basement plan, just the exhibit B emailed to us, just because it's, I, I'm having trouble reading this.
So for Friday, we're going to need a clarification on the hundred foot exemption for the gazebo, whether it preexists or.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I have to, I have to check the date for the thing.
Okay.
If it's been there, if it's nineteen fifty five, it preexists, so you, you have.
Uh, we're going to get a, a number on the size and capacity of the water pump. And we're going to get some information on the holding tank.
Yes.
We're not going to try and do this on Friday.
Well, because I just feel like we just got this, so like, you know, just to be able to read through it carefully and.
No, I think. Did we close the hearing or do?
No, we're just going to start the hearing, right?
No, we already had the hearing.
That's what I'm saying, now we're going to continue, and so do we want to discuss it again Friday or just do it at another work session?
I didn't say work session.
Yeah, everything work session, they can submit documents, I'd like to know the square footage of what's proposed that being dug.
In the basement area.
Under the house.
Yeah.
And the structure that, you know, your infill is.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's going to add to the hundred and seventy five for the hundred square foot exemption.
Yeah.
That you're, you're proposing.
I, I think that what the board is suggesting is, if they want the project to move along, the sooner the better that we get the information that, that is requested. You know, that, that, that's just more advantageous for your side, just to if there are any questions, we can bring them up in a timely fashion and have them looked at, you know, a two or three weeks, yeah.
I don't know, I, I'm concerned about, obviously Montclair Colony is it should be a poster child for environmentally sensitive areas. I mean, it has saltwater on three sides. And there are homes there that don't have motive water. Which is, is a very, very great concern. I don't know if we should request a Thies analysis, what are you, what are you guys feeling on that?
Yeah, we've requested it in other sensitive ones.
Are, are the owners aware of the sensitivity and the history of, of what's happening there for the last four or five years in terms of water? Okay. Because it's just more advantageous for them, they're going to put all this money into improving a home and, and, you know, putting all these additions on it without the water, you know, it's, it's a key factor. So Albert's point, you know, is well taken. You are literally surrounded on three sides by saltwater. And saltwater intrusion is a real factor, you know, that you have to consider down there.
Would the board prefer, we, we had to talk to the MEP about how the holding tank would work, but in terms of locations, would the board prefer that to be on the, closer to the water or not closer to the water?
Only day? No, in mechanical space.
In the mechanical space, okay, no, that makes sense, right.
You're the.
We actually.
Near your, near your well pump, whatever, where would that be?
Yeah.
And I, I guess a Thies analysis, we, we would request.
Howard, last.
She had all the pools for the house being instructed, wasn't going to hold it torn down. All the work is being done, the equipment, storage, eighty seven five. Which is completely against what we're doing.
I know, actually, I submitted before that we had a.
Microphone, mic, the microphone.
We had a structural engineer prepare a report that was submitted with the zoning board of appeals, explaining how construction of the so I can actually submit that with our, our new submission as well for you to see, because we were, we had to give the exact percentage of how much of the house was being instructed when, when we worked for the zoning board of appeals, because this is a nonconforming structure, so I can definitely submit that as well.
Jerry?
Yep.
Could you do us a favor?
Yeah.
Just put down that list of things that you, just so everybody will do a checklist. Okay, we're going to verify the hundred foot exemption for the gazebo. We're going to come up with a size and capacity for the water pump. Same with the holding tank capacity. Going to verify the depth of the pool and the uses in the basement. Utilities.
And the square footage.
Yeah, okay. And we're also going to request the Thies analysis.
I mean, the increase in square footage?
Yeah.
When the excavation on the west side and the, and the infill. That's taking place, I mean, that's within the seventy five foot buffer.
Right, we're pretty clear on that? Yeah, all right, so thank you very, very much, I appreciate that, so that was half dozen things that are requested.
In the Thies.
Yeah, and that's included in there.
Yep.
That's included in there. The sooner the better, we get it, that, that would be fantastic, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a nice day. Okay, next on the agenda, Friday, we have a town board meeting and two of the things that we have is we have the hearing on the definitions and related to the definitions of two mooring applications we have. One for the Deering Harbor in the, one for the Ramshead in that we've been holding, and one for Winter Road address, I think it's six, whatever, that we've been holding, waiting for the verification of our definition for residence, so we're going to do the hearing Friday for the residents, well, for the definitions, one of which is residence. So I'm proposing or I'm suggesting if we pass the if we approve the definitions for Friday, I'd like to put the two moorings back on the agenda to approve them. Here's the question, what if we approve the resident definition, but some of the other ones don't, you know, we need to work out? Do we have to hold up the moorings to do all of them, or can we?
You can cut it up in pieces.
Okay.
I believe you can delete and pass.
Okay, because we've been holding up the, certainly the Ramshead moor for a number of months and the other one for a while also.
I don't think they'll be used for a few months.
No, I know, but let's just get it off the plate before the end of the year, if we could. Okay. Okay, so that was the definitions and mooring applications, they kind of go hand in hand. So the rest, the other things we have on for Friday night is the revision of the septic requirements, we're going to have the public hearing for that. We're going to have the create the sanitary flow credit, that's really the transfer of development rights. And the, again, I said, to revise the definitions. So those are the hearings that we're going to have on, we sat the hearing, so we're going to have the hearings this Friday, and we'll discuss them forward. Before we go into board member reports, I just want to go over a couple of things. Next week, the community housing board is going to come here, and we're going to discuss their plans for, or their recommendations for extending the group to meet the governor's recommendations for the community housing legislation that would, that'll be coming up in November. It has to go from, we have a five member board, it has to go between seven and fifteen, and there's specific people that need specific professions that need to be included in that. They're also going to start talking about the housing plan that has to be developed for that legislation. So they're going to come and make their presentation tomorrow, and that's next week, and that's all we're going to do next week because at two o'clock, we're going to go into executive session and we have interviews for, we're going to be interviewing candidates for the sergeant position. Because sergeant was ready as we are retiring at the beginning of the year, so we're going to be interviewing people for that. Then in the following three weeks, the work sessions, I'd like to, we're going to make presentations, we're going to make a presentation again with the community housing board, we're going to make one for a proposed sewer district in the center here, Joe's going to give us the the results of the study we got from the
Lombardo.
Thank you, Lombardo, regarding all the municipal buildings and the school and what the plan, potential plan for that is. Then we're also, then the following week, we're going to have a discussion on West Neck Water and Suffolk County Water. Going forward with that arrangement, we have a six month agreement with them, and we're going to discuss going into a long term agreement with them. So these are all things I want to get done before the end of the year, put everything out on the table for everybody. We'll include BJ and Meg in those discussions.
What is, what is the, the schedule going forward?
I don't, that's a good question, really, and we were talking about that, we have a meeting Friday, then I don't think we have anything else.
Well, I emailed you because I wanted to know the dates for the year end meeting, organizational meeting.
Yeah.
Did you pick those dates yet?
Let's do it right now.
Okay. How about December twenty eighth for the last meeting of the year?
What day of the week is it?
Tuesday.
Sure.
And then January fourth, the organizational meeting?
Sounds good to me.
One o'clock, two o'clock, what time you want to do it?
One o'clock.
Okay.
December twenty-eighth.
Is the.
Yep. What do we call that one? End of the year meeting?
That's the annual meeting.
Annual, okay.
So that'll be one PM.
Yeah.
Yes. So instead of a work session, we have an meeting.
And then January.
Tuesday, January fourth.
Fourth, yes.
Twenty twenty-two.
That's the organizational meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so will we, just to be clear on this. So we're still meeting on the seventh, fourteenth and twenty-first?
Yes.
Correct, okay, regular meetings, okay.
Okay, so another little point of business, I had invited BJ to sit up here with us today and I thought we would swear her in Friday to finish Mike Bebon's seat, but officially, the Board of Elections hasn't decided what they're doing yet, so we're including Meg and BJ in our discussions and they'll be included in an executive sessions, but officially, we can't do anything till we get the official notice.
You actually.
Friday. Yeah.
This Friday? Okay, okay, good.
We usually get that notification like about the second week in December or something.
Okay. Great.
Jerry, you're not beholden to that for an appointment. You could have appointed someone.
Right.
Three months ago.
Okay. Oh, you hit actual, we could, so BJ, let's, let's plan on appointing you Friday. Because Bob said we can be, we could have, we could have appointed anybody all along. Yeah.
Yeah.
In other words, we could appoint somebody, period. You know, and if you lost the election, sorry, you're out, you know, so we'll do that. Then the last thing I have is we have to, we have to make sure we get all our advertising in. Dottie will have to sit down and go over it. Planning board, we're going to have an opening.
Okay.
Green options, we have to check. I don't know if there's an opening or Tim Patel wants us to create a position.
Did he resign or what?
There's, no, no, he was.
There's an open.
Oh, there is an open green option. Okay, so green options.
CAC, Joe.
CAC.
Meredith is not interested in joining CAC, but said she would be happy to assist in efforts designed to examine herbicides, which she spoke to the co-chairman about, and, you know, so Howard can acknowledge that. So she.
So you have openings in CAC?
We do. We still, we still have Dan, we still have Dan Burner, who's interested in being on that committee. So, yeah, so, you know, we could bring him in for an interview in the coming weeks, okay?
We interviewed.
We did, not, not for this committee, we interviewed for something else. So, I mean, it depends on how you want to take that, so.
Okay.
Is that interview good enough for what we need?
And, and, sorry, let me backtrack a little. One of the other things before the end of the year, we'll talk about is how we're going to go forward with the comprehensive plan. We'll talk about that also. Okay. That's all I have. Albert?
What do we have? The green options. Committee met. There is an opening and somebody has expressed a serious interest in joining the committee. So if we have to advertise, have we advertised? No.
It's not posted right now.
If we, I think we could send out an advertisement this.
You don't have to advertise.
You don't have to. Okay, all right. Somebody has strong energy background. And has expressed a serious interest to join the committee. A number of things. They're looking to invite Lynn Author from Southampton to come to a green meeting to discuss new initiatives for solar installations. Mary Morgan from Drawdown, that's the carbon drawdown group, is going to be invited to the December's green meeting to discuss, explain drawdown and household habits to reduce. And the committee said that they would like to see water testing, water quality testing done more on Shelter Island.
Should probably put him in touch with the WAC.
They just, you know, they had discussed that. That's all we have, Jerry.
Okay. Amber?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Jim? Very quick, I was out of town, so you're lucky. Turn that one over right there. It's just a natural. Tomorrow morning, ten o'clock, deer and tick meeting. All right, so if anybody is, wants to attend, we'll be here at town hall, by the way, so you can either attend personally or you can attend by Zoom, I guess. I would like to acknowledge, and I was out, Mark and I were out of town, so could not attend the service, but deeply touched by the, the death of Steve Dickerson. Steve was more than an electrician to me, even though he did numerous jobs at my house and for the family in the neighborhood, and I know he's known by so many people across the island. It was sudden, it was tragic, and it was, he's a big loss. I, I look at Steve as a, as a friend. I saw him the morning that he was driving down to Silver Beach to, to do the job that he did. And my thoughts and prayers are to the family. Wonderful family man, wonderful father, wonderful husband, and just, just a great guy, and, and I miss him dearly. I, I still, to this day, that's all I could think about going out to Utah was, you know, every night I'll put my head down on a pillow, I said a prayer for Steve and his family, but my heart goes out to them, really does. We lost, we lost a very, very good man. Terms of the fifth center, when the military people are home on leave, Joe, nobody, there is no charge. So all our active military folks, whether they're home for a month or week or weekend or whatever, so that we, we wanted to make that, you know, acknowledge that, just as a reminder. I would like to put word out to everybody, starting yesterday, all your boats needed to be off the town landing, so that's Bo Payne asked me to make this announcement, so I'm going to make it this Tuesday. Reminder, next Tuesday, these boats will be impounded, and it does come with a price to reclaim your boat. So usually they lay off, but I will announce, I would have announced it last week, but we didn't have a meeting. Please, if you have a boat, any type of kayak or anything else like that down on a town landing, we need you to remove that back to your property or it will be impounded. And that reason for that is twofold mainly. Number one, to conduct maintenance at those areas, and we do have maintenance efforts that go on there. And number two is during these extreme high tides in the winter with the winds and everything else, if a boat gets pushed out to sea, we're not sending the Bay Constable out looking for somebody that probably is not on that boat, but the boat is missing and, and, you know, or we find a boat floating in the water, we wonder if there is some occupant on it at the time. So for all those reasons, please take those boats off. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay.
Community Housing Board, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow at seven PM in person and on hybrid, so that's just got added to the calendar, so just wanted to put that out there for people who are interested. And then there's WQI at six PM on Thursday and West Neck Water at two PM on Friday.
Very, one other thing, lie to you. Medicine program, so everybody realizes we have killed, you know, we've taken some deer down. And they, and at the recycling center behind the recycling equipment, there is, there are coolers, there's a freezer back there. There's a new poster that's been designed that is hanging out there that actually explains to you the different types of meats that you can get. So Julia Weisenberg sent me this. It's pretty well done. It's got a picture of a deer. It, it will tell you what you need for soup stew, burger, sausage, roast. It talks about steak stew, yeah, all those things, and filets, steaks, chops, tenderloins, it's all marked on the package. So for your convenience, folks, we ask you not to take too much, you know, usually we ask you to take a piece or two, rather than to raid the freezer and take all the contents, you know, for all the winter. This is a shared thing that is across the island, so it's, it's a nice plus at the recycling center. So just take a look at that new poster out there, it explains all of it to you at the freezer. Thanks.
I have one more thing before we go into public. We got a letter from Joe Denny, who has some interest in the skate park, and he wanted to know if he could come to the town board and make a presentation. And my suggestion was he go to the recreation department first, recreation committee, and speak to them. And one of my colleagues felt that it's the recreation committee, not the park's recreation committee, but I still think they should go to them first.
Remember, we played with this for about a year, year and a half ago, that we tried to upgrade the existing facility because there was a request to move that facility to the center of town to make it more visible and put it in the center of town, closer to where the playground areas are, so the older kids would be on there and we just felt that with all the priorities that we had, the current town board, which was us and, and Mike at the time, felt that, you know, moving it was not in the best interest. Would, in the best interest, could it be updated, the existing facility? The answer would be yes. How did we want to do that? We wanted to add new signage for liability reasons primarily. Definitely needs adult supervision for children less than twelve years of age. The park itself could be worked on and improved in terms of safety. But you know, we, we, I can resurrect that, that email that I sent to the town board on, on that, and, but we're not, again, that's Kim is the, Riley is the, is the chairperson for the rec committee, so if Kim would like to put it on her agenda and we bring it up at our next meeting, that would be fine. I know Jim is probably, they've probably consulted you on this once or twice. The police officers are very nice about going by the facility, making sure that the, you know, the place is, you know, well supervised. So that's it. Oh, the other thing is that light down at the basketball down thing, that was worked on yesterday, so I got a Susan Sincotta stopping in, in the parking lot here yesterday and said, Jim, that light, what are we doing with that lights on all night? I said, we'll take care of it today. Before I got down there to look at it, as I drove out of the parking lot, the school was already there and they were working on the problem. So they, the timer, I guess, was off or something like that, that automatically shuts the lights down at a certain time. So they are very much aware of that. There's been additional effort to keep the park clean down there with, you know, picking up with the garbage and things like that on a regular basis, so folks, this is your facility, so when you have concerns about such things in a nice way, just pick up the telephone, call town hall, make us aware of it.
Call the school.
We'll call the school, call the school, and they'll get on it, stand corrected. Call the school and they'll, they'll jump on it and get that taken care of, A S A thing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Bob, do you have anything else?
No.
Dottie, anything for Friday?
People are coming in looking for a copy of the regulations and the fee schedule and everything for leaves at the landfill. We have nothing.
Should have it in the back.
I don't work in the back.
I think they do. All right, I'll find, I'll get it for you. Okay.
I didn't know you had said it.
I'll get it for you. I get it for you.
I asked yesterday, when I went across the scales twice, I was going, they seemed to be fairly pleased. It, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, it's going to take a little.
It's going to take, it's going to take a couple of weeks, but we're working on it. The guys at the scale house are very much, you know, on, on it. And the, the whole progression down there, all the concrete work now is done around the twelve pillars, which is nice.
Yep.
So that's, they're safeguarded. The next step is to work on the roof, you know, which they're starting to get up there on the roof. After roof accidents, I, I would, I do hope that, I know guys are wearing steel, the, the plastic hats, you know, but I want to make, I want to make sure that you're high enough there that if you fell from that roof, that could be a serious, serious accident. So whatever measures, huh? They have to have that, they have to.
They, yeah, they do.
Yeah, well, that's something that we would want to make sure that that's being enforced at all times.
Yeah.
To prevent any serious injury.
And, and on that note too, just to remind, or not to remind, to tell everybody, our residential repair program, we're not going to clean gutters anymore. We, we used to clean gutters, first floor gutters, but the, the fellows that we have doing, they didn't feel comfortable doing. If you need your gutters cleaned, you have to pay somebody.
No, they had that advertisement where you put the screen right over the top of the gutters. Jerry, you stole up on that ladder? How many times I told you to get off that ladder?
No, last time I fell, my guys, that's it, you're not doing it anymore.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
What's that for? Well, I thought they should do.
No, we did, we, we definitely set the fee.
We set the fees already.
But you didn't do a resolution.
Yeah, I think we did.
No.
Yeah, the only one you did was twenty dollars last year.
That's all we did.
That's all you need?
That's the only thing we're charging. Well, you mean, you mean the, well, the other thing we're charging is a daily fee if you don't have a license.
Okay, so we need all that information, so we can get everybody up to date, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anybody? Questions? Howard?
Two quick things. One, have we got the results of the twenty twenty census yet?
No.
No? Because I think we need that. Moving ahead, we have about eight hundred and thirty-something new residents in the last ten years.
That's what they're telling us, I don't.
I know. We have to see.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the other thing. What are we doing about, I've heard talk about when communities have to visit properties?
Right.
What are we going to do? I mean, we have like five people on our committee.
Well, the, we had, what, what we came up with is the badges, everybody on the CAC and, and the other planning boards and all that need to have that badge, which you, which you have. And we also need to make an effort to call ahead, so that I, I know it can be spontaneous, but I think chief, one of the, chief, you might want to address that with him directly.
So, so my recommendation is clearly that we should not be going on to private property without giving fair notice to the property owner.
Right.
It just causes too many conflicts, whether they're calling the police because they don't know the person they see on a camera, there's many people that have cameras in their homes.
Right.
Or around their homes now, and just proper protocol to let people know that you're coming to the house to do an inspection, so I, I do think there should be some methodology for that, so if that answers Howard's request. The other part that we talked about is many, many a committee member now have been coming over to the police department to get town IDs. So we are issuing town IDs to those town representatives that are inspecting properties, so nobody should really be going on to a property with, my recommendation would be to first give notice and then second to have a proper town, proper town ID. Who do we notify?
The applicant. Howard, I think what we'll do is, right after the first of the year, we'll have another department, a committee head meeting and go over all the procedures.
Yeah, because, I mean, like, we have five people, probably three of them are working all the time, someone's a five-year-old. They can't make any day, you know, you might have five different visits within a, in a week.
Private property is private property. They deserve a notification. I think each of us would want to be treated the same, right? Someone's coming to your property, just a notice.
Howard.
Can the town board get those IDs also?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So I, I think Jim, that if, if all of us, because we do make visits to the property. Okay, all right, okay, okay.
I would go with, with calling whoever is signed to the application.
That should be part of the application process.
Accessible.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, well, well, after the first of the year, we'll have a meeting.
I would say, I agree with the chief, but if, at the very least, if you're for some reason unable to contact the people before you go over, at the very least, when you get there and knock on the door and announce yourselves, what we really don't want are people walking around somebody's property without getting any notice that you're there.
Right.
For official business.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people. I, I'm, I understand originally was that once we got the, sort of the CAC, once we got the plans, that the owner was notified that there's going to be people on property.
Yeah.
But I understand that now with the alarm, the danger, you see someone, you know, they get all upset.
Yeah.
It's not likely.
Well, that's it, yeah.
The one thing I would recommend on the application is, is because of this, is that it be put in bold print, other, other type set or red or something, because obviously when people go through applications and it's a lengthy application, they don't read all the fine print. That's something, that's something that's very important for them to be able to see. And, and with, you know, put in a telephone number where you would like to be contacted, because people will, from committees, will be visiting your property, yes.
Is the first page of the wetland application has all the contact information? So when you, because the CAC gets the same wetlands application that's playing for them. So when we get it, the first page has the homeowner, their email address and their phone number, and then it has their engineer or their, whoever else is working with that. So I always email the homeowner and say, we're planning to be on your property either Tuesday or Wednesday, we're not sure anything about weather, and we're going to try. We're not sure depending on weather, and we're gonna try for midday. There's gonna be two of us, these are our names, this is the committee we work for. And I called them, I tried to do a message as well to the same extent. But at least with the email, they have that paper trail, they're notified that way. And then with the phone call follow-up, you may not get anything. Usually it goes to voicemail, so I just leave the voicemail right now.
Because we get, we have several wetlands now.
Right.
In, in response to Jim's point, there, right now, the, there's a consent form to come onto the property that's part of the application, that's its own separate page.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm getting, oh, Pam, go ahead, I want to get confirmation.
Pam?
You're on mute, Pam.
You're on mute.
I, I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving and a good time away. Everything's moving along. I, I'm concerned about the little change that's coming up now with this definitions law. You want to just pass the resident section of it. Except when you look at the definition of resident that's now proposed, it really does involve other changes to other definitions in the code. As they stand, including owners and persons, and let me just see. It's just, it, immediate family is changing. I mean, it's very intertwined, so I'm not really sure how you can segregate out the term resident and let the rest of this legislation be discussed further at a different time. I'm gonna go back.
Pam, I'm hoping to pass the whole thing, but I, if, if we can get.
Well, I'm not really sure I see how that's possible. I'm sorry, let me just finish. I'm not really sure I understand how that's possible, when it seems like the town board hasn't even really read the legislation themselves. Because there are tremendous errors in this piece of this document. The title of the document itself says that it's a legislation for septic revisions. At the very top of the page, I mean, and, and it, it shows me there's been no proofreading done on this document. There are terms that are duplicated, there are terms that, let me just finish, I will not take up much of your time, believe me. But there are terms that are duplicated, and the, and the intertwining of the new definitions. And, and I will tell you right now, this affects 27 chapters of the town code, 96 terms, 21 terms will be repealed. 30 new terms are being added, and 45 terms are changing. This is serious legislation. And looking at the typographical errors, the, the definition of the department, the new definition says it has to do with the town of Southhold. Southhold? I'm sorry, this was not looked at by y'all, and there's so much that involves the zoning code changes. I'm just, I don't see how you can just pull the one term out and try to pass that without looking at the entire picture.
Pam, I think what the supervisor was getting at is that the way that this will be dealt with is that they're gonna hold the hearing on Friday. And if there are any terms that are particularly controversial, we will take those out.
No, what I heard the supervisor say is that he wants to settle on the term of residence, so that then he can push forward the mooring applications for the Weber application and the Ramsetin mooring application. Because it all goes back to the LLC question, Mr. DiStefano, it goes back to that. So this is all so intertwined, I just do not see how you can settle on this resident change, because it's changed, it's not clarified, it's been altered. And then proceed to pass mooring applications that, that still will not be clarified and settled. And the ramifications of what's been written in these definitions with these changes are going to affect the zoning code of this town without having to actually change the chapter on zoning. So.
I think that's the reason for the public.
I'm just asking you to step very carefully on this, because this, you know, this is not good. And I'm telling you, someone needs to proofread it. The errors are important. The errors are important, like, someone who wrote it didn't even read, didn't, doesn't understand the English language. I'm sorry, it's, it's really sloppy.
It's true, affect the zoning code, do you have a particular example?
I can give you many examples of how this is intertwined with that. Changing the name of the places of what, what a place of business is, now that can happen in a residence, which means then you're adding commercial obligations and opportunities to people to run businesses right out of their homes. There is so much that is disguised, disguised under, disguised under the guise of clarification.
Well, you're, you're calling it disguised, we're calling it, we're calling it clarification, because that's exactly what it is. We, we're trying to clarify the things that are in question and making them clarified, making them more, you know, visible. As far, as far as the typos, the, the title was corrected, that was mistaken, that is, on the, on the address. The only other typos that I've been able to find was summer season in town were put in there twice. And the, in the department category, the town of Southhold is the only other problem. I haven't found any other typos. Everything else is, has been discussed at length, has been looked at, and the public hearing will be Friday. And again, this isn't.
I understand that, I can tell you.
We're not talking zoning code, we're talking definitions. And the intent was to make it a lot more easy to understand our, our town code. Instead of having 27 definitions in 27 places, let's have the definition where, where it needs to be and what it is, instead of six definitions for the same thing.
Removing 14 terms from the zoning chapter alone tells me there is something going on with the zoning code here.
Well, I, I would look and see.
And there is, and, and there is. When you, when you eliminate things like vacation rental from the zoning code, why do we need to do that? It's there, what's the harm in it being there, so that when people are looking at the zoning code, they see what applies?
Actually, Pam, I can answer that.
It's not the public hearing time, I'm telling you right now. I, I mean, I can go on if you'd let me, but I, I, you know, and I don't want to take. And would be, one thing that I remember off the top of my head is that code enforcement officer, enforcement is spelled incorrectly. It's missing an E for crying out loud. Come on.
Let me explain the, actually, what you brought up with the the rental issue was, was a perfect example. That was taken out of the zoning code because it was an orphan. When we created the, the entire rental section, it was moved to a different section out of the zoning code. And so that was just an orphan's term that really should be in a different section. And it's already in that section.
You see, none of this has been really discussed. The only discussion that I saw on public about these definitions was when you read the list of definitions. That one night, one meeting in September, I believe it was. And there was nothing discussed about repealing anything out of this code. And when I'm telling you, what did I say? 21 terms will be repealed. It's fine.
Could I make, could I make a couple of suggestions here? Number one, the town board at, at 11:45 this morning received an email from Stephen Jacobs about this very issue, about town code definitions, talking about one-family dwelling, two-family dwellings, residential property. He also, in the opening paragraph, you know, Albert and I discussed this prior to the meeting, there are some concerns there as well. Bob, could, could you provide the board, when you look at Mr. Jacobs' email, could you provide us with some type of feedback on his concerns within the next day or two, prior to Friday? Number two. Pam, if you could, the misspellings, I, you know, I'm, again, married an English major for that very reason, Pam, because she does a great job picking out my misspellings. But any of the misspellings that you see, if you could please forward those to.
We'll take your.
We'll, we'll, we'll take their, okay. The, the other thing is that if. No, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that, I'll leave it at that, just those, those concerns that I have.
You know, a lot of time, you remember, this is the purpose of a public hearing.
Yeah.
Is to have these discussions. I mean, that's when those discussions are gonna be at, you know, are supposed to be just, you know, brought out. So I mean, that's, if there's issues at that time, and things, you know, you guys have certainly in the past not been shy and pushing things back at the public hearing, brought out things that were necessary to discuss further, you know, but that's the time for public input and public discussion. So, I mean, that's the way the procedure is supposed to work.
What else you got, Pam?
So, okay, so if you're going to change what's gonna happen at Friday's public hearing, and you want to discuss the resident definition separately, how is the public gonna be aware of that?
We're not gonna change anything, it's a public hearing. We're not changing anything.
No, 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 but you want, but, but I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, supervisor, you said that you would like to just separate the term resident.
I never said I wanted to separate anything. I said, I want to have a public hearing for the definitions. And if it's possible that we can agree on what a definition of a resident is, I'd like to approve the mooring applications that we've put on hold for a number of months, because we're waiting for the definition of residence.
Good, Pam, let me, the, the way that the.
This is what I understood, so, so, so I understand that. And that's why I'm saying you do kind of want to take resident thing and, and deal with it separately on Friday, and at least pass that much of this new legislation. Am I understanding that correctly? So that you can, in fact, pass the mooring applications on the same day?
If, if we can pass the majority of these definitions, or if we can pass the definition of residence, yes. I, I feel that we've held up the mooring applications long enough that we told these people that we're waiting for a definition of residence. And if we can come to an agreement on a definition of residence, then we owe it to these people to give them their moorings.
Let me kind of, just so, because it's, we've gotten a little confused here. The, the way that the procedure would work is this, you hold the public hearing, you have the discussion. Following the public hearing, should the board wish to make a change to the law as it's presently presented, they could make, someone would make a motion to do that. You know, we, we're with, we will take this, take this definition out, or change this, or whatever. But that would then have to be voted on separately by the board, and then you could proceed to the voting on the total resolution. You, you don't, you wouldn't beforehand change anything.
Well, I, Pam, and the other, the other thing is, the, the one thing that, it's not just the, you know, Ramsetin mooring applications, they're the LLCs. My committee of the, of the John. WMAC, I just went blank, WMAC committee, has been asking for these clarifications, because they need, they need clarification to be able to act intelligently as they move forward. Because right now, they're faced with a growing number of applications, and it's not one application or just two, a growing number of applications of how to deal with the LLCs. So that, that was something that they were very concerned about. I can, there is no attempt here at an end run or a, or a hidden agenda. I mean, not, not, not that I'm aware of, that we're trying to do some things, you know, that's trying to perpetuate anything. We're trying to get clarification, so these committees can intelligently know how to make a decision based on what the town code reads. You know, that, so they need that definition of residence, you know, for the, for them to operate. That's what they're asking the town board to do. It's something that, it's not just been two or three months, this has been probably five or six months that we've been kicking around these applications. We need to act on them, they can't just go forever. But again, I think on Friday, if anybody, that's not just Pam, but anybody out there that has suggested revisions of the definitions, more than welcome to share them with the town board at that particular time for us to look at it. And if we think it makes more sense to, to go with a revised definition, then we, we would discuss it and, and act on it. But nothing is, nothing is cast here in stone, and there is no, it's, it's just a question of, you can't just not make decisions, you know, for an indefinite period of time. It would seem fairly obvious that at these committee meetings, they say, well, what is the definition that they would be using in Southhold, or in Southampton, or in East Hampton? Can't we get a workable definition? Because this is, this problem is not just endemic to Shelter Island, it's, every other town here on the east end is faced with the same thing. And, and their major concern of the WMAC was the growing number of applications that had LLCs and didn't have the actual owner's name on the applications. And that, that was troublesome, because it's difficult to determine what they're entitled to in terms of the number of moorings that they're entitled to, whether they be riparian moorings, or, 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 or not. Or private moorings, thank you. All right.
One thing with definitions, they, they should be as policy neutral as possible at being trying to, trying to define the term. Now, there's a certain amount of policy involved in what that term is, but there's, there's not much you can do about that. But the, most of the actionable legislative issues that you have to deal with should be done in the body of the law and not in the definition. So that was a lot of the attempts here, was to try to boil these things down to just the definition of the term, without getting into policy considerations.
May I just respond to Mr. Colligan's comments? I, I, I agree that these, these applications for these LLC moorings is a problem. And I, and I've known, and I've been saying it all along, and I have said in more than one meeting that I am not against the Ramsetin getting their moorings. I mean, that would be ridiculous, that's just unreasonable to stop them from getting it. And now we have a few other LLCs that are looking to get moorings as well. So, to me, this is something that has to be dealt with, with the mooring law. It doesn't have to be dealt with with changing a definition of a resident or a dwelling, or a basement, or anything else. It's a mooring law issue. And I have, I have asked you before, this board before, to come up with a solution for these situations, because there are only very few of them around the islands. And we know where they are, and we know that there's a new one coming up now with Marine, with Chax Marine, it's, it's coming up again. So, so the, to me, the solution is not to start changing definitions and complicating things and, 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 and holding up applications. To me, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's really a resolution to the mooring law that you need. That would solve the problem for these few situations, these few businesses that have moorings, who have had them for many, many years, who want to continue to be able to transfer those mooring rights to new, to new business owners. That's really what the issue is here, as far as I can see. It's not any more complicated than that.
That, that's, that's a large portion of it. The other portion is the people that own multiple properties, the people that, you know, that own it, we don't know them, you know. If you don't identify your name, you're not quite sure whether they're the owners of two, three, four, or five, and how many moorings they're entitled to. So that's something that's a little disturbing to the WMAC, when assigning moorings, whether they're riparian or private. They would like to be able to say, who is the actual owner? And by law, I guess they don't have to disclose who the actual owner is, but we would like, you know, it, it's, it's a dilemma that we're trying to overcome and address.
I'd also point out the WMAC is considering sometime either later this year or early next year, looking into revisions of the mooring code.
Correct. Well, that, that is, that is true. Last year, we worked on the docs, doc law, this year, we're working on the moorings. So, it's something we want to do during the winter, spring, prior to next year.
Okay, anybody else? Julie, you have anything for us?
I'm okay, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session to talk about litigation and personnel. Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, thanks, everybody.